Michael Fiocco must be stuck in traffic. John Bonnet has been called out of town, but he will not be able to. Let's go ahead and call the meeting to order. This is the meeting of the Pittsboro Board of Commissioners for Monday, August 12, 2019. And as we do, let us pause for a moment of silence, keeping in mind the victims of the recent mass shootings. Thank you. Jay Farrell, I don't believe we have Girl Scouts here tonight, so would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I'd be glad to.
Sir. Oi, allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the liberty and justice of our own.
Thank you.
You have the agenda before you. Is there a motion either to approve the agenda as stands or to modify the agenda?
I'd like to add something to the agenda if that's possible, to discuss a public announcement about our water.
There are some materials at your desk tonight regarding that. Is there a second Tibet Wilson Foley's motion, seconded by Pamela Baldwin? Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Thank you. Those opposed, the motion carries unanimously. Now, where shall we put that? Is it new business? Okay. You have the consent agenda here that consists of five items. And is there a motion to approve the consent agenda, or is there an item that needs to be pulled further?
I have one. I would like to. I just have one question regarding the sewer allotment on five, number five, but it's not regarding the sewer allotment. Can I just ask the question that maybe we move that over to old business? Or I just have one question and maybe Jeff could answer. Want to do it now?
Let's do it now. The honor of the business is here with us tonight, too. That's the, sorry, can't remember your last name.
I'll go down.
Thank you. And she can be here to answer the question if need be.
Okay. This question came with a couple of people asking me about it over the weekend, but this space going from retail to office and possibly 30 full-time employees, where does this stand with parking?
The parking in the downtown area, there is no parking requirement in C4, it's only district. So use can change from retail, there was no parking requirement for that retail use. Office use, there's a parking requirement for office.
Can I just say something? Just to clarify, like the membership, not everybody is there at the same time. So we could have that many members, but not everybody comes. Like maybe they come for a few hours or four hours, or they come every other day or once a week. So you usually don't have that many people in the space at all one time.
Okay. That's a big concern downtown is parking. So, okay. All right. Thanks, Jeff.
Then are we ready for a motion on the consent agenda?
So moved.
Moved by Jay Farrell, seconded by Pamela Baldwin. Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Those opposed, the motion carries unanimously. For citizens' matters, we only have one person signed up tonight for public expression period, and that is Ed Fowler. Ed, you come forward.
Hi, I'm Ed Fowler. I live over in Silverstone Village at 86 Rinsong Drive. Thank you again for this opportunity to speak. This will be probably the last time that I'll be able to address the board and the folks here in the room, because I will not be able to attend the next meeting, which I understand will probably be the vote on the Chatham Concrete Plant. That is the reason I'm here. I'm going to ask Glenn to hand out some handouts. It's just a summary of what we have sent out before. There were two key petitions that were delivered to the board and the mayor and the folks in the town, going back to March, April timeframe, and even prior to that last year when it was originally under Southeastern Concrete, not Chatham Concrete. So I just wanted to kind of summarize the bullet points here. We received two different petitions in 2019 and one in 2018 with more than 244 signatures from 160 homes out of 192 home community, expressing and showing opposition in two different formats from our community to the Chatham Concrete Plant coming into property adjacent to our community. The recent memo from the town planner summarizes the key reasons for recommending denial from the last meeting, which was held on August 5th, when Frank Stancunis was present, the applicant. And to quote, "The applicant has not proven to staff that this proposed use will not be injurious to the use and occupation or enjoyment of adjacent premises by reason of the emission of creation of noise, vibration, light, smoke, dust, or other particular matter." Why is that important? If you look at our first petition, which the highlighted section there in yellow, just by definition of M2 properties, you can see that this is referring to the same language that the planning board is referring to as well. There are some technicalities which Mr. Stancunis, I'm sure, might be able to overcome, but the general sense is that he will not be able to overcome all of the opposition. And just by this definition, I don't think, and folks in the neighborhood do not think that he will be able to come up with enough evidence to show that he can protect us from noise and dust and all the things that I've listed here. Health issues, noise issues, resale value impact, quality of life, environmental impact. I don't know what the impact for the town is on water usage, because a concrete plant uses a lot of water. The first petition was to deny the application, which is where we believe we are now, but as things come up, you know, we're trying to look ahead. Is there a possibility that we could work with the applicant, which we have tried to do on numerous occasions, to work together to prove to us and the community, and by the way, I'm representing the HOA as well as the chairman of an ad hoc committee, with additional buffers to protect noise and dust, additional concrete barrier possibly to the height of the tallest item in the plant, similar to roadway barriers, hours of operation that we are concerned about, more truck traffic that we're concerned about. The one thing that was key to me when I attended the August 5th meeting was, you know, the recommendation from the planning board was to deny the application. Of course, there was a response from a number of people that were here. They clapped, and we thank the planning board for their recommendation and realizing what we have been talking about for all this time. But what struck me the most was, I was not at the meeting on the prior meeting where the applicant was presenting himself as a good neighbor. At this meeting, at this meeting, he was unwilling to even discuss alternatives post the meeting, to show he really wants to be a good neighbor. He has, in the past, not answered my calls, reaching out as a member of the HOA. He has actually turned down in writing an invitation from Jeff, the town planner, to speak with the HOA and the community. And when we approached him after this meeting on August 5th, it was clear to everyone that he has no intention to listen to our concerns or suggestions to make this possibly work. And we had a couple of alternative ideas. For example, he stated, "For concrete was closer," and he has no intent to listen to their offering, which we heard at a couple of meetings ago, to work together, to try to work as good neighbors and possibly move the noisiest portion of his business across the street. When mentioning noise levels, he said, "Our lawnmowers were louder." The key point he's missing is lawnmowers are usually once a week at most during the season, and they're not 24/7 or even, I don't know what the hours are. That's one thing that hasn't been answered. Main point was that his behavior, his body language, and certainly all, he's not interested at all, at least after that meeting, in being a good neighbor. So don't be fooled when he tries to convince you that he will act any way differently when he attends the next meeting, as he did at the originally meeting.
If you could wind up, we're past the three.
I know. I appreciate you giving me a little extra time, because it's the last time here, nobody else is here. Thank you very much. All right. The main point, like I said, is if approved with promises, we feel that without any means to enforce them, they will be empty promises. If approved, we feel that there won't be any means to enforce them. I'll give you an example. There was a gutter business that was put behind our pool a few years ago, and there were promises made. I was involved again with the board and that, and there were promises to make everything paved, to minimize the noise, to put buffers in, and that's been there for several years, and it still hasn't happened. Anyway, final point is, we're asking the board to take all these matters, mainly the quality of life issues, because there are a few people there with, you know, pretty significant illnesses. We've already had our neighbor move out, a significant loss, to get ahead of this, right adjacent to the plant, and we've had another neighbor move out because of this. So please take a serious long look at denying this application. If you can't see fit to do that, to do everything you can to ensure that everything is done possible with enforcement rules in place to minimize the impact of this plant if it does make its way here. And I think the most important thing is to take a look at the 30-year-old, you know, M2 definition of properties for 92 acres or 82 acres, whatever is adjacent to our properties there, that when you do the UDO, please reconsider amending that, because we'll just be dealing with the next concrete plant or whatever it is that moves in. Again, I thank you for allowing me the time to go over. I really appreciate you offering us this time to hear us out, and we hope that we have your support during the critical next meeting. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ed Fowler. Next matter on the agenda is commissioner and manager update. I usually have a number of meetings that I have attended during the last two weeks, and that has not been the case this particular time. So let us turn then to Brian Grußbeck's town manager update. Let us go ahead with Pam Baldwin has a number of things that she wanted to discuss.
I attended the Pittsboro Public Housing Advisory Board meeting last Thursday. That was very, very good. And I attended the Chatham County Advisory Task Force, well, not Advisory, Chatham County Affordable Housing Committee meeting, and that was the first Thursday in this month. So both of those are good, and we hope to be moving forward with looking at affordable housing. And right now, we have someone reviewing the proposed, looking at ordinances regarding the affordable housing for the town of Pittsboro, what we may be able to propose. But of course, we want to bring it before the board and everybody, and Mr. Jones will get to look at those as well. We're going to do that together, the people who do the reports to the board. So those are two. Then I have one more. The Fair Association, Chatham County Fair, is scheduled for September 26, 2019 through September 29, 2019. And we would like for everyone to attend or participate in terms of putting something in as an exhibit. And the fair, again, will run from September 26, 2019 through September 29, 2019. And bring your little children, and you all come as well. Thank you.
Do you want to announce the word that we got about the affordable housing grant? Well, Brian Grußbeck, you had sent out an email to those of us who were on the board. Do you want to bring that into your update, if you would?
Well, it wasn't really a grant, it was that they were approved for tax credits.
Tax credit. And this is a 46-unit?
Yeah, that's what they call, I believe, the retreat at Pittsboro, 48 unit, up on Chatham, or up on Business Park Drive, past the post office. You'll recall that you took action on a resuming request back in March, and I still, I think you still have the site plan yet to go over. So, yeah, definitely good news there. As the email, the earlier email, not mine, had indicated, this is our first one in a couple of years, a couple of three years. Just a few other items real quick. The Water Asset Management Plan, you recall, CDM Smith is working on some feasibility information for our existing water treatment, our water supply. And CDM Smith is working on some feasibility stuff for our existing water treatment plant that the raw water intake, our existing raw water intake. We're looking to have those before the board in final form on August 26. That should include some recommendations on possible new water treatment methods at that raw water source. So some interesting stuff coming up there. Somewhat tied into that is the Chatham County Utilities Master Plan. You recall some discussion that you had, some, well, basic discussion on this from Hazen and Sawyer earlier this summer. Staff's going to be working with consultants on August 27 regarding those preferred alternatives they reviewed, as well as the dashboard. I think we went into the dashboard a little bit that evening as well. And so we'll be looking to circle back with the board on those findings in September and hope to firm things up. We've had some initial, I've had some initial conversations with Sanford City Manager, and he indicates that they are interested in any kind of partnerships that the county and Chatham Partners came up with. So I think there's good news on that as well, as far as providing us some various sewer and water treatment alternatives, both to meet any quality concerns as well as any capacity concerns kind of in the future, which is going to take a lot of work and probably a little bit of money. So definitely, definitely some work to do on that. As previously mentioned this evening, Chatham Concrete, the planning board recommended denial on August 5. The applicant may be approaching the board commissioners on the 26th. I'm not sure we have the definite, definite word on whether that will happen. I mean, it could, but look for it. That's what he's working for. Newtown Hall, we are scheduled for a work session discussion for lead on August 29 at 6:30 PM. Separate item, but also Newtown Hall, I structure is doing some water pressure modeling in the area of the Newtown Hall building. You recall the last workshop that we enjoyed, discussed some of the water pressure issues that we have in the area. I think this information will be key towards determining some design features, like whether or not we have, for example, fire suppression hardware on site, or whether we can sufficiently increase water pressure by, say, increasing the size of the mains around that area. So we'll have some data to report back on that. We did have this slide in your packet, but I thought I'd give you a bonus slide this evening. Pesticides. There's been some discussion about how the town deals with herbicides, pesticides, in the town of Pittsboro specifically, what does town staff use. The, in the last, over the course of the last, I guess, few months, I can't report that we've discontinued any product that contains basically the ingredient that you see around them in public areas. In the future, we may be, we may need to provide some minimal treatment in sewer easement areas that aren't necessarily publicly traveled, but that's expected to be minimal. Even then, we've only used about a gallon, a gallon and a half. Mr. Potte, Streetsie Utilities Director, is increasingly using a non-toxic method called HOMS, which I'm not really familiar with, which apparently has an indoor as well as outdoor use. And so we'll see how that goes. And then finally, not bulleted in there would be that we may increase our usage of mechanical means of taking out invasive weeds, particularly in areas, probably facing areas like sidewalks, dirt, and so forth. So we're hearing the concerns, and we're taking steps to modify how we do things, and we'll keep working on it as we move forward. So thank you very much for that discussion. Recall, a couple of months ago, we were hearing a generator, discussion of a generator. We did make a budget modification to allow for a new generator. We had it budgeted, I think, last fiscal year. We are looking to actually begin installation of that late this week. Concrete pad would be, is expected to be installed here at Newtown Hall late this week. Installation of the following week, and hopefully we don't have to use it during this upcoming hurricane season. So that's the goal there, of not being able to use installed generator during hurricane season, if that makes any sense. Personnel. In the process of hiring budgeted positions for planner and engineer, I'm going through, finalizing our descriptions on that. I think we have the planner position finalized as far as when we want out of it. The engineering staff position, we will have around in the next week or so to get those out as well. I will say that we may have the ability, I think, in the near future, to discuss with you adding additional positions in those areas if possible, and I'll be approaching you here in the near future on how we may propose that. But as far as the budgeted positions, we're going to go ahead and move forward on, and then see if we can continue chipping away at a lot of the work that these guys are doing on a day-to-day basis, and keep making up ground in things like planner view, and, you know, so a lot of the conversations that we have with developers and so forth. And other than that, I think that just about covers this evening's comments. The only other thing that I would mention is, there is a Chatham County Chamber, Area Chamber of Commerce Development Briefing that I believe is supposed to take place on the 28th. 27th? I will get you out an email on that. There's been, I think you may have received direct emails on that, if you're interested in applying or signing up for it. How to snow, I will follow up with an email on that.
Is that the event where we have the option to get a table for those of us that attend?
I think that's actually EDC, this is a different briefing that the chamber does. It's also going to be at the Ag Center, which I'm not aware of if they don't.
They had it there last year.
With that, I'll tap off. Thank you very much.
Actually, interesting though, I think it's all good.
I think I'll need to, so.
Please go ahead and sign up for it, and I'll give you the details.
All right. 27th.
27th.
8:00 AM.
Under old business then, our first item is?
Mayor, before you go, I have one question, I'm sorry. Either Brian or either Jeff, regarding the concrete planning, I mean, the planning board denied that last week.
Their recommendation is to you all to deny.
Okay. Why is it coming back to us so quickly?
Because the next step is for you all to make a decision. The planning board's not to stop, it's just a recommendation. Yeah, they're giving their advice, their recommendations for you all to consider when it comes before you for an actual decision.
So, but it's no, I guess I was a little confused on this. I thought if it was denied through the planning board, that he had to resubmit.
No, they don't have the ability to deny it, they just recommend it to you all to deny it. There's been some confusion over that, takes off of emails from folks who were at the meeting last week. It was just a recommendation.
Okay.
But he did hear from, hear the board, and was making one last attempt at trying to satisfy the town. So that's what he's doing now, is he is revising the plan, will be submitting those to staff, will be reviewing those, getting those into your packet for the next meeting. That's what I'm, I have this thing up.
Okay. All right, thanks.
So the first item under old business, Jeff Jones will lead us in a discussion about the update on Unified Development Ordinances, particularly regarding tree protection.
Well, I don't know how much we're going to get into it tonight on tree protection, Mayor. Just wanted to give a quick update of where we are in the Unified Development Ordinances. And I did send out a doodle poll for you all to choose a date. What's really nice is that I believe that Commissioner Fiocco and staff's last date that we are supposedly meeting, although we got a little different communication today, is the 13th of September, and that we have the third Monday is the 16th of September, which is when we've held workshops before. But you all go to the doodle poll and fill that out. I think I gave six or seven different dates for you all to take a look at. So right now, through the summer months, that staff has been going through the editing process. There was some direction given to remove the tree protection section and the natural resources overlay section. For further study, we're working through that part. We're working through those comments that I sent along in a separate email that Commissioner Fiocco had. You can see there was like nine pages of those, and he and I and staff were going through those comments. I did send out in your packets two communities that I had mentioned during our review of Chatham Park's tree protection element, and that I mentioned whenever we had some comments regarding our tree protection element, and getting on that as we go through the UDO process, and maybe even doing something quicker than the UDO might come about. I sent, I gave you the town of Matthews and the town of Davidson's tree protection ordinances. And those two are ones that I referenced pretty heavily during my review of Chatham Park, and gave you some comments back on percentages and what folks, what at least these folks are doing in relation to tree protection. I really like Town Matthews' tree protection element, because it speaks to trees in the public realm, trees in the private realm, and who takes care of trees in the public realm in the ordinances. And they have a separate town ordinance and a land development ordinance that speaks to tree protection. So I hope you read those two sections. That's what I'm, I, I have to say.
Okay. All right, thanks.
So the first item under Old Business, Jeff Jones will lead us in a discussion about the update on Unified Development Ordinances, particularly regarding tree protection.
Well, I don't know how much we're going to get into it tonight on tree protection, Mayor. Just wanted to give a quick update of where we are in the Unified Development Ordinances. And I did send out a doodle poll for you all to choose a date. What's really nice is that I believe that Commissioner Fiocco and staff's last date that we are supposedly meeting, although we got a little different communication today, is the 13th of September, and that we have the third Monday is the 16th of September, which is when we've held workshops before. But you all go to the doodle poll and fill that out. I think I gave six or seven different dates for you all to take a look at. So right now, through the summer months, that staff has been going through the editing process. There was some direction given to remove the tree protection section and the natural resources overlay section. For further study, we're working through that part. We're working through those comments that I sent along in a separate email that Commissioner Fiocco had. You can see there was like nine pages of those, and he and I and staff were going through those comments. I did send out in your packets two communities that I had mentioned during our review of Chatham Park's tree protection element, and that I mentioned whenever we had some comments regarding our tree protection element and getting on that as we go through the UDO process, and maybe even doing something quicker than the UDO might come about. I sent, I gave you the town of Matthews and the town of Davidson's tree protection ordinances. And those two are ones that I referenced pretty heavily during my review of Chatham Park and gave you some comments back on percentages and what folks, what at least these folks are doing in relation to tree protection. I really like the town of Matthews' tree protection element because it speaks to trees in the public realm, trees in the private realm, and who takes care of trees in the public realm in the ordinances. And they have a separate town ordinance and a land development ordinance that speaks to tree protection. So I hope you read those two sections. One is the, the one that has the 99-9, that's their town code, and then the other one is there from their land development ordinances. And it goes through and speaks to the number of trees that should be there for, you know, parking and buffering. I think that might be what I'm understanding this board to want to go towards is the town of Matthews there. Davidson has always been one that I've found to take great pride in their trees as well, and that's one of the reasons I look towards their ordinances. They again have percentages of trees per zoning district laid out, and we may want to do the same thing. So I encourage you all to take a look at those sections. I did, we all did, reference derm a lot, and I have read derms many times. I did not include that for us to consider. That closely, not closely, but was referenced a lot by Chatham Park in their tree protection element. And from what I'm hearing and what I understood from you all during that process, that we're not derm. So I did not include that for you all to further consider in writing our tree protection ordinance. I would want to say that we did a lot of work on the tree protection element for Chatham Park, and there are aspects of that that we might want to pull into our town as well, or into the larger part of town. So we'll have to consider the good things from the tree protection element, because we've already kind of talked about those for a number of months. Let's continue to read, continue to look at these ordinances, and hopefully we can get this workshop scheduled in September, and we can talk a little bit more about tree protection along with the UDO. I don't feel like there's anything imminent that's going to be as noticeable as the apartments. So if I did and I saw things on the horizon that could be that way, I would be a little bit more worried about it, but I think we're okay for the moment for the development patterns that I'm seeing. So we've got a little time. Any questions?
I was just going to say that I will look closer at the town of Matthews. The Davidson protection ordinance, I like just because of its simplicity.
It is smaller, yes, yes.
It's less wordy, but I also noticed that Matthews had a provision for payment in lieu, and Davidson didn't seem to make that exception.
Not in what I could breathe here, but there may be other things that are in ordinances or policies that just aren't always in your face when you write, read some of these things.
Yeah.
I think that's something that we have to, that we might need to consider, so it's there for us to think about.
Great, thank you so much.
Okay.
I know a lot of us have been very concerned about the trees, so we're delighted to have this coming up again.
We will definitely take it off.
Well, that's true. I feel like I should know this, but there have been a number of tree, tree trees that have died, not the ones that I've been trying to give water, but some other ones that have died previously.
Okay.
Now, who is responsible for replacing those trees, or is there anyone responsible?
In that place. I think the developer would be, the HOA would be on the hook for replacing those.
I wasn't sure if the town, the street, right?
I think whenever we write or tree policy ordinances, we need to be clear. Whenever the town requires a tree to be as a part of the development in the right of way, we might need to be, to take on that burden of maintaining that tree. Other communities do that. I think the town of Matthews, it clearly states, any tree that's in the public realm or in that street right of way, that they take care of. Right now, we don't have that policy, and it was a development-related requirement, and I would point to that development-related requirement, and they're not meeting the requirements of the development, and I would ask the HOA to replace those.
And just from my experience, the Matthews policy in that case hasn't really, previous experience, we haven't, in previous communities that I've worked in, we haven't maintained street trees like that. We maintain trees if they present a safety hazard, if they're hanging over sidewalks or falling in streets or something to that effect. If the tree dies, we might remove it. The tree wouldn't necessarily be replaced by the town in those situations.
Yeah.
So there again, there's different ways to kind of handle the situation.
Yeah, I think other communities in the area are definitely taking a look at trees and who maintains them, and setting up things such as street boards and setting aside monies to do tree plantings across town.
Exactly, because in those situations, we would split the cost, in every other community I worked in, we would split the cost of planting street trees with the property owner.
Yeah, yeah, there could be some cost share of that.
Yeah, we'd work with an arborist and decide what kind of trees we wanted in the community, and then work with the property owner. The property owner would kind of put in an order, so to speak, to the town, and then the town would plant the tree and then send half the cost of that to the owner. That might be something we want to.
Yeah.
Well, you're up next as well.
Oh, I am? This is another plan that we're working on, is to bike and pet plan. This is a DOT administered project that Alfa Planning is working on for DOT. The town was awarded a grant last year to update our bike and pet plan, and we're about halfway through the update or the writing of the new plan. We've had two committee meetings so far, and right now, the consultant, Alfa Planning, is in the drafting phase of the plan, and we should have the draft plan by the end of the month. And then we're going to have a period of review by staff and the public, and we will have a, Brian, just go to the next slide, I think I've got some dates on there. Yeah, we've got a, our next committee meeting on September 25th, it'll be here in the Town Hall Board Room at 10 o'clock, and then our public open house will be, on the draft plan will be October 22nd, from 4:30 to 6:30 at the Library Meeting Room. That's where the public can come in. The plan would have been out for at least a good month or two, and would, the public will be interested in the maps and the document, particularly when it's associated with their property, so we might have some comments back, why isn't there a sidewalk or some greenway proposed near me, or why is this greenway proposed near me? Those will be the kind of comments that we'll have. After the, after the draft plan, public open house in October, the consultant will do some tweaking to the plan, and then since it's a DOT project, DOT has to approve it as well, so it will be sent off to DOT, and their planning branch to approve the document. They'll be looking for things that mesh well with DOT policies and guidelines. So we're not proposing as a town some crazy, you know, street cross-section on DOT roads or sidewalks where DOT might not want them to be. So they go and they review that, they review all types of, you know, grammar and punctuation and all that too. So they do a thorough review. We anticipate that coming back to us in December, and then they can go through our approval process, which will include the planning board, and then ultimately you all to approve that plan. We're doing really well. We had a great response rate on our survey. I included the information in your packet, it's online for everybody to see as well. We had a wonderful walkabout assessment, a couple, probably a couple of months ago now.
Yeah.
Yeah, but it was really good, it was hot, but it did demonstrate where we didn't have sidewalks, where we had deficient sidewalks, where street trees were really welcomed because of the heat that day. If you were on a shady spot, you could tell, and it made your walk more enjoyable. Part of that assessment and the plan itself is being generated by the Health Department, Chatham County Health. So they're doing a health assessment as part of the bike and pet plan, and they've sort of put some monies towards that for their purposes that will be included in our, in our plan. Chatham County Health has been very instrumental in getting word out on surveys, being at events throughout town to make sure that people fill out surveys, so I want to give them kudos on really helping facilitate the plans so far to date. But again, the plan itself is going along really well, anticipating that draft coming at the end of the month, and then we'll go from there. Okay, any questions? And from the walk assessment, we've already fixed some sidewalks. Kudos to Brian and the town. Well, we may, the town may have had.
We were only fifteen.
Yeah.
It was kind of, it was kind of eye-opening.
It really was, especially right at the elementary school.
Yeah, yeah.
All of a sudden, it just stopped.
Yes, yes, yes.
That's great.
We will definitely, this will prepare us to know where we need to have sidewalks and greenways and bypass in the future, so it's a good plan for us to have. Thank you. All right, thank you.
Excellent. Our next item then is the item of new business with respect to water. Do we have the capability of putting this up on the screen? I guess we don't. The question is that several weeks ago, there were some very negative articles in health publications which talked about Pittsburgh not, how to put this, about our particular water situation with unregulated chemicals. And there was some criticism about the fact that we, according to this article, had not done a great deal in regard to that. There are several unregulated chemicals that are present in our water, one four dioxane, bromide, PFOS and PFOA, which have been recently discovered in the analysis of our drinking Just out of curiosity, John Bottic and I put together this timeline on what Pittsburgh has done with respect to unregulated chemicals, and it's at your desk. It starts back in 2015, I think, before I was mayor, saying that Bill Terry, the former mayor, wished to begin to present some documentation via NC State's Dr. Detlef Knappi on the presence of one four dioxane. And so we have a three-page timeline essentially of what Pittsburgh has done with respect to these unregulated chemicals in the water. Based on that, and based on some concerns that other board members have had, several of us thought that it might be a good idea for Pittsburgh to present to the water customers a notice that these chemicals are present, but to also remind customers that the town's drinking water does meet or exceed every state requirement. And the state of North Carolina and federal government have not set limits on the unregulated chemicals as to when they are safe when present in drinking water. So Brian Grusbeck and I met over about a week ago and talked about this kind of notification. It's on the agenda tonight because I had sent it out by email as well. We have always walked the fine line between notice and understanding of the problem and not wanting to unduly concern our water customers. And because these are unregulated chemicals, and because there's not a limit set by either the state or the federal government, we thought that it might be appropriate to at least notify customers in some fashion. I would input a short statement in the water billing, which is now done by a third party, you may remember, it's now being done through a company that we would have to get materials to them. And I told Brian Grusbeck when we had our meeting last week, that there's only one thing I look at on that water bill, and that is the amount due. And that if there were a paragraph or two or three on that water bill, I would probably not, as the general consumer, even look at it. Brian Grusbeck suggested that the notification could come out in a separate mailing. And Brian, you, I'm trying to remember what it is that goes out annually to our water customers.
It's called a consumer confidence report that we're required to annually mail out, and that's what, yeah, that's what we typically will mail out, it's a pamphlet, and we also post it online, and it's made available, and it's made available on the line.
And then there have been, from time to time, separate notices with respect to chlorination or lack of chlorination or.
Ammonia, or short over.
Yes. So I think those notices probably get a great deal more attention than something in the water bill. So it's, we're bringing it for you tonight because I think that it's an important policy decision that the board needs to make, that this is the way we would want to proceed, you know, and that we, and that we're dedicated to the idea of alerting but not alarming the public. Brian?
Yeah, just a couple of comments if I could. One thing, as Mayor Perry pointed out, we're not in violation of anything. In fact, we're winning awards annually. We've won a fifth consecutive award for exceeding state and federal treatment standards. I'm not sure the nature of the article, or the natures of the articles, or where the concern comes from, but we aren't in violation of anything and we're exceeding standards. Typically, you put out a notice to the public when you're actually doing something wrong. And it's like we're in violation of something, and that's not what's happening here, so I just want to make sure that you're aware of that, and the public is aware of that. Second, as Mayor Perry also indicated, that we are developing some treatment solutions, both in terms of water quality and in terms of water capability or capacity. That information's going to be coming to you at the next meeting. So, and I think that was the point of some of what Mayor Perry was getting at, is that we want to be sure that we're aware, the public is aware of what we're doing to continually improve our water, not necessarily to rescue it from an untenable situation, because that's not what's happening here. And I want to be very clear about that. There is, there is an alarmist message, I think, that you can, that you can put out there by sending out a notice, but if the notice is structured in such a way so that it's more positive than it is negative, then I'm more okay with it than not. And then finally, the other thing that I want to mention that I want to make sure that people are totally clear on, is the sampling that was done that has uncovered, so to speak, the unregulated chemicals that are present that were mentioned by Mayor Perry tonight, mentioned by others at other times. That sampling was not done by any third-party consultant that the town asked, to put any word into it. The town had not, the town has not hired these consultants to make these studies. It's coming from a third party. It's nothing that we're required to do as part of our normal operations. The point there is, is that, again, reinforcing the point, that what we are required to do, we're doing, and we're doing quite well. And I think some of the information that's coming in would be from third-party sources that I guess want to highlight the larger issue of the unregulated chemical piece, which is apparently something that does turn up in our water. But again, we're taking steps to correct, and I think, and I think depending on which direction the board wishes to, wishes to go in this, and what costs, I think there are workable solutions to all of this, but just wanted to make sure that those comments were out there before you guys proceeded much further with this. I do stress that I think we have, again, I, when I first got here, we were in violation of a number of things, TTHMs, you know, we had boil water notices quite frequently. I'd like to think that we've come a long way in a short amount of time.
And I agree with you. I think that, I'm proud of this board for addressing this head-on, and I think that we are doing everything that we are required to do. I think my goal in this is to keep people in mind that while I think my goal in this is to keep people in mind that while we are doing everything we can, there have been some chemicals that many feel might be harmful. And so my goal would be to let people know that this exists, even though we're following state standards, so that people can make their own choices about whether or not they drink the water. But I also think it's important to stress that we are hiring, we are looking at ways to address these chemicals and to remove it from our drinking water at our expense. It's something that we are required to do, but we're doing it because we care about the people of Pittsboro. And for me, it's important that the people of Pittsboro feel that they can trust us, that we're not trying to sugarcoat anything, that we're being honest to the point of we don't want to create panic. I think this has been such a learning experience for the board members, too, because, like you said, we are within state requirements for these contaminants in the water, or these chemicals, maybe we should not even say that. But because there has been some alarm, I feel that we need to let people know what's happening so they can stop and know what the comfort level is.
And I do agree. Actually, I would like to also say, you said that's a third party that has performed this particular analysis. I think we need to identify who that third party is in this, and also, we need to reiterate, because I do want the public to know as a FYI what's going on, but we certainly don't want to alarm them. But we do need to indicate, of course, this is what this particular third party found. We do not agree with, you know, we did not request that particular analysis or anything like that. And however, this is what they indicated, and we are actually going forward with even addressing those particular things, even though the state indicates that we really don't have to. And I think it's important to actually say that, that it's not required by the state that we do this. This is something that we're willing to do because we are concerned about our citizens, on our children, our parents, our grandparents, to all have safe drinking water. And right now, based on state standards, it is safe. And I think also, we need to reiterate the awards that our water department has received in reference to that, so people will know, we've gotten those awards, we exceeded what the state has indicated, here's the award that shows this, this, this. Even, and then, of course, recognize all of that, and by the same token, let them know, as you said, you make your own decision in reference to it.
I agree. Also, the main thing is that we're just not trying to hide any, any problems here. So we don't have any problem with this at all.
And I guess that's what the paragraph that's next to the last here is, said that customers have the best information about this situation. The town wants its customers to know that these chemicals have been found, you know, depending upon the flow of the river, sometimes they're very small, sometimes they're larger, and that they've been found not only in the Hall River raw water, but in the treated drinking water. And that nobody knows for sure. They could be upstream discharges, they could be agricultural runoff. All of that is yet to be determined, but I guess that one of the things that we have felt strongly about is exactly what you brought up, which is the basic issue of trust. And this town has children and has senior citizens and population, people in populations that are perhaps compromised immune systems, and it may end up being nothing, and then again, it may be something that other people need to pay attention to. So that would give them the information. So why don't we take this notice and work on it, Brian and I, and take some of your points into.
I think that we can add, like, we can have this letter, but also, I think we need a whole page that addresses this, that also has links if people want to see the studies and want to see some of the results, and maybe we have links on that page so that when we send this out, if people want to learn more about it, they can go to a page on our website and connect to links that will provide them with more information.
Part of why I mentioned the third party is that, if I'm honest with you, I don't know that I necessarily sponsored any of these studies.
Well, they are from, well, Duke University's been doing a study, Duke study, and they have some Hall River, I mean, Hall River Assembly, but I mean, there are some sources that people, I don't know, I'm looking at, from my perspective, one of the first things I wanted to do was look at the numbers. And I'm just trying to think, like other citizens.
I mean, if we had Adam here this evening, Adam would tell you, I think, there's differences in how they're compiling the data and how he would describe the data. And I think maybe their aims and their goals are different than maybe what some others are.
Well, do you have, people are going to want to know more. This is just going to make people think, what's going on? I want to know more. So how can they feel like we're their partners? What information can we provide that will help them feel better informed?
I'd say that we've been in compliance for over five years.
Okay, yes, that's true. But I think that's important to talk about. We can have links that show the awards that we won, that kind of thing, but I think also that we need to have something, if there's a reliable source about what these chemicals are, that would just be my recommendation, just so people feel that we are truly being upfront, that we do have access. I mean, anybody can do a search online, but they might appreciate that we have some what we thought were reliable sources about some of these contaminants in the water, unregulated chemicals. That would be my suggestion.
Well, and the professor from NC State that started back in 2015 talking about this has presented at this board a number of times, and I don't have, I'm not aware at all that his findings have ever been challenged.
So maybe we can include a link to those meetings where he spoke, where he presented.
We could possibly include a link to the report, probably much of the contaminants of our analysis that we have been doing.
I think people would really appreciate that. It would help with the drive.
That's just the stuff that it does not give all of the analysis.
It doesn't have to give all.
It's not going to give you a full picture, but.
But I think there's things already on public records.
To compare higher information a little bit more to that, to give some context to it.
I think that would be really helpful.
What our engineer has just said, for those of you from the back that couldn't hear, was that we could produce a link to the CDM Smith Water Report, which has recently been before us, and that that link could perhaps supply additional information.
Okay, yeah.
And I think that Adam Pickett needs to be a part of that formulation of the information as well.
And Adam needs to be committed. He's done a great job of improving our water quality, so this by no means has anything to do, anything on his part. He's exceeded, in my opinion, what, he's really made great strides in improving our water quality. He's in compliance, he's been wonderful. So I think that really needs to be clear, too, so people don't think that this problem is because of anything he's done, because that's not the case. As a matter of fact, he's been very cooperative and very helpful through this whole process.
Let us work on both the wording of the informational insert as well as supplying third-party, supplying additional information on our website for those people that want more resources or information. Would the board think that this would get more traction with and provide more complete information if it were a separate mailing rather than the water bill?
Well, the water bill isn't, you can fit 140 characters on the water bill, so it's not really, it would cost, it would cost just as much if, yeah, like a tweet, it would cost just as much if, I mean, we haven't really, to my knowledge, we haven't really worked out a way to put an insert in the water bills.
Okay, because that's what I'm thinking, it could be an insert with a water bill.
Yeah, I don't know what our abilities are on that. I think it would be just as easy for us to actually send out a sucker and if that's what you want.
I think it would be.
Well, we can look at both options.
And it's supposed to be, we need to get the website set up so that we have a link that's included in the letter that will provide more information and contact, who's in the contact? Is there a person that could handle? I guess that would have to be very time-consuming. And we can put it on, after it's done, we can put it on the town's Facebook page as well.
Does the board then feel that we have made this as sort of our directive then upcoming?
Okay. You got votes?
Do we need a vote? Do we need a motion to, all right, okay. Is there a motion then to adopt this as a directive of this?
Second.
Moved by Beth Wilson Foley, seconded by Jay Farrell. Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
This opposed. Motion carries again. Thank you. Speaking of directives, that's the next item on the board directives on the agenda. The very first thing is the herbicide ban, and we've heard from Brian Gruesbeck, our manager, tonight about the strides that have been made in that regard. And as I recall, we decided that we would hear periodically from John Petit, and he will be reporting to us as time goes on, I believe, did we say every six months or every year? Or, I'm not sure what is reporting.
The information I gave you tonight has passed along from.
So that's John Petit, and I greatly appreciate that. I know this was something that I felt strongly about, and I'm just delighted that we've taken up the matter with this kind of seriousness. With respect to the plastic bag ban or elimination or reduction, I think that we're waiting to see the reaction of the Food Line manager and the Girl Scout troop that was here this pastime is not only going to be working on the issue that they're working on for their silver award, but I think they're interested in helping to work with plastic bags as well.
The Boy Scouts, right?
Yes, that's right. There was a Boy Scout that wanted to make that part of his project as well. So I think we're making great strides on both of those board directives.
Should I tell my story about Food Line yesterday?
Oh, yes, please.
I was really impressed. I went to Food Line yesterday, and the checkout person, her name was Chastity, and she asked me if I brought my own bags, and I was like, all right, that's a good question. And I said, no, I left them in the car. She said, well, if you want to go get them, I'll wait for you. And I thought, ooh, two more stars for you. And there was a lot of people, so I didn't want to slow things down. And she said, well, you can also buy these bags for 99 cents. I can get all of your groceries in two bags at only $2. And I was like, okay. But that made me think that Food Line maybe has been talking to their employees. I was really impressed. I told her, I said, I'm going to tell the mayor what you did. She let me take the photograph, and so I told her how much we appreciate her making those efforts, and hopefully other Food Line employees will feel inspired by her.
Very good. So we have now additional updates and reports under Commissioner's concern. Jay Farrell, do you have concern?
I just have extra two little small things. Regarding the plastic bags, we did go to the cornstarch straws at Burley's. We still have some older plastic ones, so everybody, if you do want the eco-brand, the eco-friendly, there are a ton of requests right now, but we do have them. The other thing that I always wanted to discuss, Jeff has gone, was the, I guess it was the last meeting we had, was talking about the development agreement with Chinatown Park. I would like to some, I guess, go a little different direction on this. This is a pretty thick and intense book that I've actually not been through myself, even though we've had it for numerous months and maybe plus years. But maybe get staff to have their recommendations and come to us first before it gets thrown in our face.
Yeah, I think one of the things we talked about, I don't remember whether it was Commissioner Fiocco or someone else that brought it up, about actually having a staff presentation in September.
Okay. I must have slipped through that time, I'm sorry.
But yeah, that's kind of the idea, just.
Okay, that's good. That's all I have.
Okay. I don't think I haven't seen it, but it'll come to me a bit. There was somebody that told me something, I was very chugging with it.
Him, I'd say. I'd just like to reiterate, Commissioner Farrell had said, if we could have some of that information definitely pinpointed as to what are some of the more important things and things you want us to focus on more so and review, it would certainly be appreciated. I know we have to redo the entire thing, but oftentimes, things will jump at individuals, look at it more, and that way, we can go and look at it all. So that would be appreciated, and the presentation would certainly be nice.
And just to back up a little bit, what we were, this all kind of got started most recently with my recommendation to set a public hearing for the development agreement, which is required, but it's not necessarily, again, as you're all aware, a public hearing doesn't in and of itself approve, you know, the development agreement. So the public hearing is just a required component by statute of a development agreement. So that's all that was trying to do. I wasn't trying to rush anything through, I wasn't trying to, but I, yeah, I think for everyone, it's kind of good to maybe just reset where we're at with it. And Mr. Bostick and I have actually a meeting on this, I believe, next week, where we're going to kind of, with Chinatown Park's attorneys, and we're going to kind of go through what each of our expectations are. In the meantime, staff will be working up an overview for you, and we'll, hopefully it'll be smarter when you walk out of the room than when you walk into it.
And I'm not looking to make an appearance that we're slack or lazy or whatever, but we're talking about a book, this thing, and it is really a, it's a challenging document, even though we've seen a great deal of it before, and some of the elements and.
A lot of other fat documents, it's.
Anything further? If not, then it's our motion to go into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318A3 to consult with our town attorney regarding pending litigation. Motion by Pamela, called one second by Beth Wilson Foley, that's the case, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed. Motion carries now.
I'm excited about your business.
What?
I'm excited about your business.
Oh, thank you. Is the, I'm sorry, I don't understand, is my, do I leave about my water sewer thing?
Go in there.
You're a legal agent, you're going to run a water sewer in this session.
Ricky, so you, your sewer.
Oh, it was approved? Oh.